I'd like to take a minute to introduce this evening. We have with us the high school teacher and director of the Madrigal Singers, Maddie Kitchens, and the Madrigal Singers. Come on in. You're all set. Come on in. Please rise for the Star-Sangled Banner. We've got a couple more songs, so please take your seats.
Una cosa que hay ahí, si vas por el mundo de Chiara, su aldo de su cielo sagrado, mi amas al coro sentirá. Una cosa que hay ahí, si vas por el mundo de Chiara, su aldo de su cielo sagrado, mi amas al coro sentirá. Ven de ahí, mi amor, que soy el sol de la luz cielo, soy volando de grande monte cerdier, y el viento universo, Jesús corre gloria. Una cosa que hay ahí, si vas por el mundo de Chiara, su aldo de su cielo sagrado, mi amas al coro sentirá. Como verá por tanto, da su reacción, oh, me el cielo que soy cielo. Y el viento universo, Jesús corre gloria. Una cosa que hay ahí, si vas por el mundo de Chiara, su aldo de su cielo sagrado, mi amas al coro sentirá.
Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, my love. Cause I'll be standing on that side, checking it out. Say it's hard, but try to check. And let him go on the place of God. Don't you worry about a thing. Don't you worry about a thing, my love. Cause I'll be standing on that side, checking it out. Don't you worry about a thing.
Thank you very much. That's the best call to come, as far as I'm concerned. See new folks? It's worth coming down. Any town meeting members not been sworn in yet? I don't know who she's waving at. I see no new town meeting members. Alright, let's do our test vote on the clickers. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. Did the classic novel Fahrenheit 451 get its title from the temperature at which paper ignites? One for true and two for false. It's true. Temperatures, that is the temperature at which paper will burn, 451 degrees Fahrenheit. I don't come up with these, they're given to me. Alrighty. Recognize the chairman of the board of selectmen, Mr. Quro. Quro. Mr. Quro.
Thank you, Mr. Leonie. It is moved that if the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposable at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 8th, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM.
All in favor, please say yes. Opposed? Okay, then. You know, finish tonight. Any announcements or resolutions? Mr. Quro. Apparently I've been pronouncing it wrong for years.
We'll get there, Mr. Moderator. Joe Quro, Precinct 15, member of the Board of Selectmen, but speaking actually as a member of the Board of the Performing Arts Parents Association of Arlington High School. If you enjoyed the Madrigal Singers, I just want to let you know that this Saturday and Sunday is the annual Arlington High School Pops Concert. Will happen right here in this hall, Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. I know that balcony tickets can be purchased at the door for $6 per person. Be the Madrigal Singers, as well as many other incredibly talented Arlington High School performing arts groups. The proceeds go to the scholarship programs for graduating Arlington High School seniors who intend to pursue study of the performing arts. So, there's more.
Including the tennis bake sale outside. Ms. Costa.
Thank you. Barbara Costa, Precinct 10. If we traveled back to 2012, we'd find Arlington Town Meeting in this very room casting a resounding vote in favor of Article 73, which was a resolution asking the Commonwealth and Congress to take actions that would reverse the impact of Citizens United and a Supreme Court ruling that greatly increased the influence of big money in politics. Five years later, we have Article 60, a nonpartisan resolution about limiting the influence of big money in politics. We won't be voting on Article 60 because we do need to limit our focus to business within Arlington. But, as local leaders, we'd be wise to learn about the efforts of the Arlington voters who took the time to get this resolution on the warrant, because they're doing something about an issue that does hit home. For example, speaking locally, the rising cost of healthcare coverage takes a growing chunk out of our town budget, while in Washington, health industry groups successfully lobby for laws that lead to some of the highest drug prices in the world. Lobbyists are also working to privatize public education with a voucher system, a trend that could reduce the funds available to Arlington schools in the future. Climate change may cost us here in Arlington in storm damage and cooling bills, just to mention a couple. Yet the measures meant to protect the environment are often undone after fossil fuel lobbyists make campaign contributions, still totally legal, to the elected officials who are responsible for regulating their industry. So I'd like to draw your attention to the flyer, the black and yellow banner. It was emailed to town meeting members, it's at the back of the room. And this was, it explains how resolutions across the state, like our Article 60, are part of a bigger plan to fix systemic corruption in government. And it tells you why folks in Arlington support this plan, organized by the group Represent Us, that's represent.us, a nonpartisan movement that's working state by state to build momentum for federal reform. Our Arlington neighbors have engaged with Town Meeting. It's up to us to respond by paying attention to this and supporting their efforts as we're able, so that perhaps five years from now, we'll have a government that really does represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Mark, Precinct 14. I make this announcement each year, and it's actually precipitated some responses which are gratifying. Let me just read from the legal ad. The Sims Medical Use Nonprofit Corporation is an entity established pursuant to a voluntary dissolution of Sims Health Services, essentially Sims Hospital. Certain provisions of the dissolution agreement as established by the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth set aside certain funds remaining from the hospital's dissolution to be administered by the Sims Medical Use Nonprofit Corporation. I have the privilege with Charlie Lyons and former town nurse Jackie Keshen to sit on the Board. We accept requests for proposals which are due on June 2nd. We administer approximately a million dollars' worth of available funds, not available, but we give away about $40,000 to $50,000 each year. Primary beneficiaries have been, for instance, the Council on Aging, Youth Consultation Center, but it doesn't have to be a town government organization. It can be any group that, in a very broad sense, provides medical services to Arlingtonians. We will, as I say, if anybody has any ideas, for instance, last year we gave to the Boys and Girls Club for a nutrition program. So if anybody has any prospective requests, please see me at the break. The grant submissions are due by June 2nd, so there is ample time. Couple of brief notes. Also, I went up to get my clicker and it's missing. So if someone inadvertently picked up number 162, please look at your clickers. 162. You don't want to be recorded under my name on those votes. Another very, very brief note. This is my 44th annual Town Meeting, somewhere around 370, 380 sessions. And it's gratifying. It's amazing to me, when I first started working for the town, this hall was half-full. Whatever the town officials went up and proposed, it was rubber stamped. That's not the case anymore. You people are extremely, the quality of the presentations, the level of discourse is amazing to me. For instance, you saw in the zoning articles, the group that were, not at each other's throats last year, but were very much opposed to each other, came together under the housing zoning conference, that committee, and they came together and they presented some very, very excellent articles which are going to serve the townspeople well. So, I'm very proud, and I know you are, to be a small part of this. And I encourage the new members, let your voices be heard, because we're anxious to hear them.
John, they got your new clicker. Mr. Gilligan? Were you double voting? There's no, he probably didn't know a paper.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Stephen Gilligan, Precinct 13. This is a double announcement, same subject, but it's a twofer. I direct your attention, Mr. Moderator, and the attention of this Town Meeting body to the gallery. In the gallery, there are 25 Scouts from Troop 306 of the First Baptist Church of Arlington here this evening. They are here as a requirement for earning their citizenship in the community merit badge. They do have to stay until you speak, Mr. Greeley. They also had the inauspicious requirement of having to listen me speak to them prior to this meeting. To just echo what Mr. Mark just said, it's amazing how intelligent, bright, intuitive, and questioning the young people of Arlington are. So I give them all kudos for that. The second part of the announcement, Mr. Moderator, is, the Boy Scouts of America is 107 years old. Well, Troop 306 of the First Baptist Church is celebrating a triple centennial. They are 100 years old this year, they are 100 years within the town of Arlington, and they are 100 years at the First Baptist Church, and their celebration is next month, and I think they deserve a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rudeman?
Good evening, I'm Dave Levy from Precinct 18. This is my third, no, fourth meeting, so it's really an honor to work with all of you people here, as a brand-new rookie. I don't know how many people have seen the thickly-settled 25 mile an hour speed limit signs out there, but as a young dad, I love them. I mean, I think they're just fantastic. I think in Precinct 18, we have a lot of, we have couples taking walks, we have dog walkers, we have people running. And then we have kids as young as mine who are on strollers, learning to ride their bikes. We have older kids on bicycles and all sorts of kids going to the parks. So I think this is great. Safer streets are just awesome. So, my announcement is I want to do two things. I want to raise awareness, and I want to donate money to a worthy charity. So I designed and paid for this bumper sticker, right here, it just says, "I Drive 25 for Arlington Kids." It costs $5. I paid for the production. All $5 goes to the Arlington Youth Counseling Services, right over there. So I'll be selling them here until I sell out, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is also a twofer. My partner, who's going to do the first part of this announcement, is approaching the microphone.
Name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Betty Stone, sorry, Precinct 7, I didn't say that.
Hi, Carol Band, Precinct 8. Didn't see you coming up there, Betty. I'm here to announce a joyful noise, it's not leaf blowers, and you'll be relieved about that. It's Porch Fest, and it's coming up on Saturday, June 3rd, right here in Arlington. It's going to be in East Arlington and also in Arlington Heights, from noon to 6:00 PM. It's free, free music, it's Celtic music, it's blues, it's jazz, it's rhythm and blues, it's soul music, it's gospel, it's everything you could want. We have 120 bands, 120 bands. 120 bands on 75 porches, and it's free. So, Wahoo Arlington, and it's the second annual Porch Fest. Last year we did it, and it's sponsored by the Arlington Center for the Arts. Betty?
And on the back table, there are information flyers, if you would like. Last year, this is part two, last year, across from the very popular fiddling porch that was on Wyman Street, I think, there was a young man who was selling homemade delicious scones. He didn't make them, his mom was in the back making all the scones, but he sold them and all the proceeds, he donated to the Arlington Center for the Arts. Flash forward one year, and the Arlington Center for the Arts is still fundraising. We're in the midst of a major fundraising campaign as we look forward to building out the top two floors of the historic Central School for our new, to create a new home for ourselves. I just want to be clear that there is no art center there right now. There are a bunch of cubbies and old offices, and so we're raising money because we've got to design this, create it, and build it. It's a challenge. It's a challenge, but we're very lucky. At this exact moment, we have a very generous anonymous donor who has put a challenge to us, that if we can raise up to $25,000 before June 1st, then this donor will match that, so it makes for $50,000. So while we're busy doing everything we do in the last 60 days that were located at the Gibbs, which includes Porch Fest, and those 120 bands on 75 porches, Shakespeare in the Parks this summer, Arlington Open Studios in the early fall, and summer vacation camps for many of your kids, I wanted to give you the opportunity, I wanted to announce that if you would like to be part of helping us create a fabulous new art center in the center of town, it's your chance to be part of that. $10, $100, $10,000, whatever your choice. There are flyers on the back, these salmon-colored flyers, so help yourself, and I can guarantee you that you will be glad that you were part of this when in early 2018 you walk through the doors of a fabulous new art center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Any other announcements?
Diane Dupont, Precinct 13. This is on behalf of Food Link. For those of you who don't know what Food Link is, their mission is to rescue food, alleviate hunger, and contribute to environmental sustainability. And in Arlington, they provide over 200,000 pounds of fresh food annually to Arlington programs and agencies. So the two announcements are, Food Link is sponsoring a film called Expired: Food Waste in America, and it will be shown at the Robbins Library on Tuesday, the 9th, at 6:00 PM. And what it is about is it's a short documentary produced by the Harvard Food Law and Policy Clinic, and afterwards there'll be a discussion about the enormous amount of food waste in our country. It's free and open to the public. The second announcement is that Food Link is celebrating its fifth year of existence, and it's going to be celebrating that on Sunday, May 21st. There'll be entertainment, food, and activities. All are invited, and it's free, from 2:00 to 4:00, and at 117 Broadway. And that's on Sunday, the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none. Article 3 is on the table. Any reports or committees? Ms. Thornton, then.
My name is Barbara Thornton, Precinct 16. I'm Mr. Moderator, town meeting members and staff, and I want to give a special shout out to 306, the scouts, as a former den mother. You guys still look the same, I don't know. I don't. I am here to talk about something that I think is very exciting, and that is one of the first new department in quite a number of years in the town of Arlington. The Facilities Maintenance, or the Facilities Department, was created, and I want to give you the report on that committee. Good, thank you. We've got, it's an important department for the town because it protects our investments. $300 million worth of investments, and that's not the personal property, those are the facilities that we own in the town, and that's the cost that we calculate they are. We have not been taking as good a care of them as we should have been. Go to number 2. I've served for years under Charlie Foskett's able leadership on the Capital Planning Committee, and every season for the Capital Planning Committee, we get requests from departments, desperate, serious requests, for things that we cannot fund, because under capital planning rules, maintenance cannot be funded. So it feels to me as if those things were waiting to collapse and fail so they could become capital for us to be able to invest in them. After going through that process for a number of years, the Capital Planning Committee took their concerns to the town and to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen in March of 2012, nope, not yet, in March, I'm going to go through the timeline, in March of 2012, the Board of Selectmen, thank you, set up a committee, and I was the chair of the committee, and Christine Deschler, I know is here, is one of the members of the Board of Select, or of the town meeting that is here. I don't believe there's anybody else here from the town meeting that was on the committee. In January 2015, Adam Chaplin sent the report of that committee to the Board of Selectmen and said, "We're ready for a new department. Will you approve?" And the Board of Selectmen said yes, with contingent on going to town meeting, and town meeting approved. The source, on page, let's skip through to page 5. On page 5, you'll see the sources of the funds come, basically 50% from the town, 50% from the schools, and there's also some money that comes in for the custodial services from other places. I'm particularly interested in, there were three important features of maintenance, long-term preservation of our assets, the midterm preservation, and then the short-term ability to fix specific problems. The long-term gets taken care of, I'm prejudiced, but I think quite ably, by the Capital Planning Committee. The midterm had no attention at all, and the short-term was paid attention to primarily by the custodial staff working as assigned to different departments, piling up work orders in a very reactive way. Now, page 6. This is the geeky stuff. You've got it in your lap, I'm not, I love it, and I could read it all day, but I'll let you read it. Let's go to page 7. Page 7, again, quickly, is a progress report, and page 8 is a list of some of the benefits that I think are really important. By the way, the progress report is a progress report of what Ruth Bennett, who was the director, the new and first director of the department, did, and this was a report that was presented to the Finance Committee. The benefits list includes a number of things. The committee, page 9, and, I just realized, Moderator?
Yes, sir. Ma'am?
I forgot, I was so excited about the scouts being here, I forgot to ask for three extra minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to turn this over to Ruth Bennett to talk about what she's doing. Thank you, Ruth.
Yeah, we've got to ask up front.
Ruth Bennett, Director of Facilities. Just want to give you a few highlights of the innovations we're creating in our department. We are using technology to incorporate all of our data into one software program where the data is permanently stored and actually accessible to everyone in our department who needs it, or any other department who wants the information. Every work order that we do includes information on what was done, if we spent any money, how much time the staff spent, so we're able to look back and see how much resources our buildings are requiring from us, and then we can figure out which buildings are requiring more resources and why. All preventive maintenance that we do in-house and externally is recorded in the software. We write down everything you need to do to fulfill the preventive maintenance, it's scheduled automatically, and actually, my admin assistant is scheduling the preventive maintenance because we've written it all down inside the software program. We're actually working with our contractors who are building our buildings, like the Stratton and our contractor for the Gibbs, so that they are inputting data on our equipment into the software program. So when the construction is done, every piece of HVAC equipment, every piece of equipment that we put into the building that will have to do preventive maintenance on, all that information is given to us in a spreadsheet and uploaded, so we don't have to write any preventive maintenance schedules, it's all given to us in PDFs. We don't have to write any capital forecast requirements for our HVAC equipment, because it's given to us by the contractor and uploaded into our software program. One last avenue, I'm trying to rush because I know I don't have a lot of time, one last avenue that we're changing our department is the way that we look at our buildings. It used to be that we looked at what was each person in the department doing, how much time were they spending on this or that. Now we're looking at each building as a whole. How much of our resources, our staff time, our financial resources, our thought time, is it taking? And does that building require that? Are there smarter ways to look at the building? And actually, my maintenance staff is giving me all of their experience here in Arlington and in their previous or side jobs in terms of understanding how we can better maintain our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Mr. Helmoth? Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmoth, Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. If you do not have the printed report or an accessible electronic copy of the Community Preservation Committee's report, we have extra copies on the back table tonight. You will need those for Article 49 because they contain the recommended votes for that article. Being the newest directorally reporting committee to town meeting, our covers are just plain white, they're not fancy bright colors like some other committees, but we're the junior, so there you go. But do grab a copy tonight because we're probably going to take that up Monday. Thank you.
Can we get two of those reports up here?
We turned them in before.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, this was just printed.
You got one? Stephanie, you got one?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take one. Okay, now we're going to get into the actual articles tonight. We're going to go through, school committee, it's going to present their report, then Mr. Foskett's going to present reports, and then Mr. Cole's going to present reports, and we're going to go right into Article 3 of the special town meeting. So now we have to pay attention. Go ahead, Mr. Thielman.
Jeff Thielman, Precinct 12, and the Chairperson of the Arlington School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues, Cursey Allison Ampe, Bill Hayner, Paul Schlickman, Cindy Starks, Jennifer Seuss, and Lynn Carden, Dr. Bodie and I are here this evening to ask your support of the school committee's proposed $56 million budget, the largest budget in the town. The number-one reason why people move to Arlington is because they want their children and future children to be educated in our schools. U.S. News &amp; World report recently ranked Arlington High School the 12th-best high school in the state based on the degree to which students perform against the state average on standardized tests, proficiency scores of economically disadvantaged students and students of color, the graduation rate, and participation and performance in advanced placement courses. Test scores and academic performance, as you saw tonight with the Madrigals, are only a part of the reason why people want their children to attend our schools. Our teachers, principals, and department heads work tirelessly to educate the whole child and to find new and better ways to respond to the diverse learning styles and needs of our young people. Our district is created to commit, is created, or is committed to creating a culture that embraces children regardless of their race, what faith, if any, they practice, their gender, sexual orientation, or how long they and their family have lived in Arlington. One of the most remarkable things about Arlington is the incredible support the schools receive from nearly everyone in town, including those with no child in a school. On behalf of every parent, we thank you, the members of town meeting, and every resident of the town for your generous support of both the physical expansion of our schools and our annual operating needs. Studies show conclusively that the longevity of district leadership, most importantly the superintendent, is critical to student growth and district stability. Since 2008, Dr. Kathleen Bodie has led the Arlington Public Schools to unprecedented student performance levels, and at this time, it is my privilege to introduce her to speak further about our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Thielman. Welcome, Dr. Bodie.
Thank you, Mr. Thielman, for that very kind introduction. Good evening, town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, town officials, and the Arlington community. There are five topics that I will briefly address this evening, all of which are covered in more depth in the report that you were given at opening night of town meeting. For those who are watching at home, this report can be found on the front page of the Arlington Public School website. This is a graph that you have seen many times over the years. What it represents is a graph of the funding sources for the Arlington Public School budget. Town appropriation represents about 91% of the total budget, and the remaining 9% from grants, revolving fees, and reimbursements. The net increase in revenue for next year is about $3.5 million, of which about $2 million will we need to cover contractual obligations, another $1 million for tuitions and transportation for out-of-district placements, and about $1.1 million for increases primarily due to enrollment growth. And I will say that these proposed increases really represent a culled list from a much longer list of requests. Now, if you add the $2 million, the one and the other one, you will find that the total amount would be over $4 million. So we looked at this current budget and reduced about $700,000 in order that we'd be able to fund these requests. This is a graph of our student enrollment projections, this is the Arlington Public Schools' projections. It is based on retention rates from grade to grade and from birth records, which is why it only goes up to 2022. This year, we have seen an increase of about 220 students from last year, which is about the half the size of an elementary school. Our current enrollment is, with out-of-district placements, is over 5,600 students. If you look at this graph, you will see that in five years, this projection would have us at approximately 6,500 students. Now, we did another enrollment study with McKibben Demographic Research, and that is also in your report, and more of the data is actually on our website. That forecast, in the same five-year period, would be a little bit less than this, around 6,200. So we have a little bit of a range, and out-years is a little bit tighter, mainly because ours is basically a straight line. But the point is that between, in the next five years, we're going to see probably somewhere between 600 and 900 more students in our school district. So we currently have five building projects that are in some stage of process. The Thompson Elementary is, as we speak, adding six classrooms, which should open in September. Later this evening, we're going to talk about the Hardy addition of six classrooms, and then there's the Gibbs School, which is planned renovation beginning July 1, opening in September 18. The fourth project is Stratton, and Stratton's renovation really is fulfilling a promise made decades ago so that all of our elementary schools have been either rebuilt or renovated. And then, of course, the high school, which is in dire need of renovation, but it also needs more space for the enrollment that we project in the upcoming years. The priorities that we have identified for next year fall into certain categories. They are support for students, for social, emotional growth, additional teachers at all levels, more support for our elementary and high school principals. As we've increased teachers over the last few years, we have done very little to support our principals and other administrators. We'll be filling some unfilled administrative positions and additional professional development for teachers and administrators. This next graph is a graph that, this shows a comparison among the Town Manager 12 communities, which are the communities that was selected a number of years ago by a wide-ranging representative committee, as the communities that most are like Arlington for a number of metrics. What you can observe here is that Arlington is in the lower half of the per pupil expenditures. But what you can see in this next graph is that Arlington's performance on our state tests, and this was for spring 2012. tests, and this was for spring 2015, is comparable to some of the highest-performing districts in the state. Not all of the districts in the Town Meeting, the Town Manager 12 participated in mancast. They took Park that year, which is why the comparison is a little bit more narrow. So, as we move forward this evening, we're going to be talking about budgets later this evening, and I want to, at this point, thank you in advance for your support tonight for our budget, because this is, this funding allows us to continue providing the education that is the vision of, vision of all of us for the students in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Foskett?
Charles Foskett, Precinct 8, and Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. David? So...
Will you change the slides?
So, first of all, I'd like to draw your attention to the, what I consider the outstanding members of the Capital Planning Committee, many of whom are here tonight, and thank them for the excellent work they put in through the year. And if, when I call their names, if they're here, they would stand up and be acknowledged. Steve Andrew, moderator appointee, Sandy Poehler, deputy town manager, Michael Morse, deputy treasurer, Richard Viskey, town comptroller, Tony Lionetta, who is moderator appointee and secretary and recently retired from the committee, and Brian Rarig, moderator appointee and vice chairman, and Barbara Thornton, Town Meeting member, moderator appointee, and, as you knew from, from tonight, also chairman of the Maintenance Committee. And I'd also like to thank Amy Fidalgo, who is the Town Financial Analyst, who's put a tremendous amount of work and effort in supporting the committee. Next slide, please. I'd just like to touch on the concept of Proposition 2.5 and non-exempt and exempt spending, which most of you are probably familiar with, but we'll be speaking a lot about those distinctions because of the various building projects that are underway. Proposition 2.5 enacted in 1980 limits the normal tax levy to 2.5% of the fair market valuation of the town and any increase in the levy to 2.5% from the prior levy, plus growth. An expense, we call it expense as non-exempt if it's kept within the limits of Proposition 2.5. That is, it has to stay within that 2.5% growth. An exempt expenditure is one that's added to the tax rate above the limits of Proposition 2.5 because of either an override referendum or a debt exclusion referendum. In other words, it's voted by the citizens. So, Town Meeting and the Town Manager and the Finance Committee and all of us here direct the non-exempt budget, but the citizens direct exempt spending. Next slide, please. The, since, so, the capital budget and the capital plan that's in the purple report, brightly colored purple report that I draw your attention to, the capital budget and capital plan generally refers to the manager's capital budget. The Capital Planning Committee is an advisor to the Town Manager, and it mostly deals with non-exempt capital expenditures, because the citizens vote the exempt expenditures. However, you will be asked to vote for both exempt and non-exempt spending, because the town has to have an appropriation by the Town Meeting in order to spend even exempt funds. So, there's exempt and non-exempt votes mixed, mixed into the, the various articles. Next slide, please. Figure one on Page Two of the Capitol Report, and figure two on Page Six, the graphs are summarized behind me here, are basically the summary of our capital expenditures this year, and we'll be talking about those under Article 34. The total capital expenditure that we're proposing for your approval is $13,533,428. Of this, 5.5 million will be borrowing for capital items. 4.4 million will be expenditures of what we call direct cash. That is money from this year's tax collections that are used to buy items that we pay for immediately, that we don't borrow, don't borrow for. And then, three point, almost $3.6 million expended from other sources such as grants, special funds like water and sewer, et cetera. Next slide, please. Table Three on Page Five and Table Four on Page Six describe the way we practice capital, non-exempt capital spending in Arlington. And basically, the idea is that the capital budget stays within 5% of the annual budget every year. And if you read the details in the plan, you'll see that we take the previous, previously encumbered debt expenses, cash expenditures, and new debt, estimated debt service expenditures, and we keep that aggregate expense within 5% of the operating budget. And when, when you vote a bonded item, you encumber future town meetings, so that's why we look at the prior debt service when we make this calculation. It's, in a sense, you're, you're paying for past sins. And this, these tables and the section of the Capitol Report demonstrate that in fiscal year 18, we are staying within the capital budget. Next slide, please. I won't go through every one of these items, but some of the items that are in the capital plan will be voted for in the special town meeting, some will be in the annual town meeting, but they are all in the capital plan. So, you can be assured that when these various articles come up, we can, we believe that they will be fundable and be able to be paid for in future years by the town. Next slide, please. I'd like to draw special attention to the Stratton project. We approved that in January of 2016 at a special town meeting, and initially, we anticipated $6 million in exempt debt. The DOR approved $8 million, so the town borrowed up to the DOR limit. And then, in the third phase of the evolution of this project, the Permanent Town Building Committee saved the town $1.5 million. This is an astounding number, because this was a $15 million project, and they've come in at 10% underneath the budget. And I think that when John Cole comes up here, we ought to give him a standing ovation for that, for that accomplishment, for, by him and the committee. The savings from this committee, the Capital Planning Committee is recommended, I'm sorry, the savings from this project be applied to the, to the Gibbs project and to the Mystic Street Bridge project, which has been accelerated because the, the town was successful in getting a new, a new bridge funded, and, and we've had to move the project more into the present. And then, finally, the next slide. I'm running out of time here. I'll just say very quickly, we have so far invested in, in recent years, about $54 million in new school facilities. And when the new high school comes online in the next several years, we'll be investing more money, probably on the order of $100 million after reimbursement by the state. So, we're anticipating the total outstanding debt of the town in several years will rise from a current, right now, we're at 80% of our debt capacity. It will rise substantially as we incur about $157 million. I think we can afford it. It's all good, and we need to continue to invest into our school facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cole?
The project's not over yet. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have the report of the Building Committee received, and I would also request 10 minutes to speak, so I could spend additional time going over the Hardy and Gibbs projects, which will be voted on presumably this evening under a special town meeting.
The report is so received. 10 minutes for Mr. Cole and the Permanent Town Building Committee. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
You have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you bring up the slides, please? Before I get into the slides, I would also like to ask the members of the Building Committee who are in the hall tonight to stand and be recognized for their outstanding service to the town. Rise, my friends, rise. And in case you missed, that's Adam Chap, Delane, Ruthie Bennett, Alan Reedy, John Marr, who's in the back, Bill Hayner, I don't think is here tonight, and Bob Jefferson. Thank you all. Just as a little scale reminder, this group of people under the projects being presented tonight is overseeing about $70 million worth of capital projects. So, I'll just flick and you go on. We finally completed the community safety building. I'd like to thank Chief Ryan and his department for their forbearance over four-plus years while this project was ongoing. As you can see here, we have a new lobby, new entrance, and of special note is a police department history display on the second floor, which I would recommend to anybody in the area to go see. It's worth a visit. We have a new renovated community room and also overnight accommodations for any unruly The project has been closed out. We received LEED Silver certification recently, and there's one outstanding issue. We have a dispute with the general contractor over a cost of a time extension, though we believe we have enough money in our contingency to cover that situation. Stratton School, you can see here on the right, the modular classrooms, which have been in service for the entire school year, connected to the existing building, which has been cleverly phased so that we had the benefit of the library, the auditorium, and the cafeteria for use during the year. They will be renovated over the summer to come online as new facilities September of this year. As previously stated, we've turned over $1 million to capital planning, and we expect another $500,000 to be available sometime during the summer. The rendering of the proposed media center and the repurposed gymnasium and the construction progress has been designed to LEED Silver to the extent practical, and that's an important distinction. Because we weren't renovating the entire building, we could not gain enough points to get LEED certification for the total project, but everything we have done has been done to that standard. Thompson School addition, this is six classrooms to be online this fall. Was a significant delay in the arrival of the steel on-site, which has been a cause of consternation over the past two months. I can report that with the able assistance of our project manager, the performance of the contractor has improved dramatically. We now believe it is possible that it can open on September 5, but in the event that doesn't happen, we have asked the school department to do some contingency planning, and that is underway. Now, Hardy School and Gibbs, I'd like to just back off a little bit to look big picture for a moment. These two projects, and we can also include the Thompson in this, are the direct result of the dramatic growth in the school population. Because that has happened so rapidly, it has compressed the timeframe in which we can deliver the products needed for the kids as they arrive. That has meant we can't do business as usual. So, on the Hardy School, for example, we are requesting $3.5 million as a total appropriation for both design and construction, as opposed to our normal process of getting design funds in one year and coming back a year later to request construction funds with bids in hand. We don't have that kind of time in this project, so we're asking for everything at once. To ensure that the numbers are right, we had the preliminary design done by HMFH, the architects of the Thompson School. We then brought in an independent third party to do a second estimate, reconcile the two, and that's the $3.5 million that will come before you under Article Three. The Gibbs School renovation is a different order of magnitude. This case, as the superintendent has noted, we're planning to renovate the entire building to house a town-wide sixth grade. It's being designed to LEED Silver version 4.0, and that's an important distinction. This is a higher standard than LEED Silver in past iterations. So, it'll come with some premium to the town in construction costs, but we will have a more efficient building in the end. The most, I think, innovative part of this project is we have changed our project delivery method to construction manager at risk. Let me explain. The traditional process, we have a design, the design is completed, we bid the design, and then we build it. So, it's sequential. We don't have the time to deliver this project in 14 months, starting July 1 to September 2018. So, the construction manager risk process, which is fairly typical in the private sector, but more recently approved by the state for public projects, allows us to bring the contractor into the project during the design phase. This has a number of advantages. Number one, they can go through this building with a fine-tooth comb to identify the hidden conditions that would typically lead to change orders in the traditional bidding package. Secondly, they are putting estimating expertise and scheduling expertise into the project planning, and they own it. It's not like one guy plans it and somebody else builds it. This case, the builder is owning the schedule from day one. You can't read this, I don't think, but what it shows basically is this allows us to collapse the overall timeframe by integrating design and construction at the same time. So, for instance, we received on Monday bids for the early trades, demolition, roofing, et cetera. The design is still going on, and we won't have the final bid package for interior finishes until early August, at which point the contractor will give us a guaranteed maximum price, and we will move forward to that to deliver the building September 2018. Lastly, the DPW project has started. We're hiring the project manager in the coming weeks, and we'll be back next year for construction funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you.
All that our reports received, all in favor, receiving the reports given tonight, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, they are all received. Mr. Tostie?
Move that Article Three be laid upon the table.
All in favor of laying Article Three upon the table, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, Article Three is on the table. That now brings us to Article Three of the special town meeting is now before us. Mr. Chap, Delane?
Adam Chap, Delane, Town Manager. Good evening. I'm going to walk through the process by which we came to recommend the Hardy School expansion. I will probably repeat a little bit of what both Mr. Foskett and Mr. Cole said, but I'll try to not go into too much detail on those items. So, as you can see on the screen, hopefully, the School Enrollment Task Force began meeting, again, in the fall of 2016 and November, to talk about the capacity challenges at the Hardy School. And just a brief refresher, the School Enrollment Task Force was formed back in 2015 to start to look at school capacity issues, and that's what resulted in the decision to renovate the Gibbs School, as well as to... the Gibbs School as well as to expand the Thompson School. There's representation of the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee, the capital planning committee, the permanent town building committee, the superintendent, and myself as town manager. So when I talk about the School Enrollment Task Force, that's who I'm talking about. So again, we started meeting to look at Hardy. We looked at the projections from the school department, as were performed by Dr. McKibben, and what became very clear is that there was a need for three to four more general classrooms, as well as additional space for special education, English language learners, and other core areas. What's happening is larger cohorts are coming in into the school in kindergarten, and as they move in, instead of needing three classrooms per grade level, four classrooms are needed. And you can see over time, as more of those cohorts move in, there's more and more pressure on the school, and that's why these classrooms are needed. We also talked about the potential for further enrollment growth from the proposed Mugar project down in East Arlington. We looked at various analyses of how to try to figure out how many children might live at the proposed development. There were ranges from 20 to 50 students could be coming out of that development, though frankly, I think we all agreed it's a very hard number to put a pin in. What we ultimately agreed upon was that, in any event, if a large number of students were to come from the Mugar development at the elementary level, they would not be able to be housed at the current Hardy site. There's really no more room to put any more classrooms than what we are proposing in terms of a sixth classroom addition. So if the Mugar site is developed and there are a significant number of students, we will need to look more broadly across the district to find solutions. So based on this need, the school department hired HMFH architects to study potential expansion options at the Hardy Elementary School. So that analysis came back to the task force, and they looked at three options. They looked at potential expansion that could be temporary and as well as permanent, and they looked at four classrooms versus six classrooms. After some significant debate and discussion, the task force unanimously agreed to move forward with recommending a permanent sixth classroom expansion. And that was really based on the value of making a permanent investment versus a short-term investment in modular classrooms. And I would say frankly, we also learned a lot about modular classrooms from both the Stratton project and the existing modules at the Thompson, and that helped make the decision that making the permanent investment, given the enrollment projections, seems to make a lot more operational and financial sense. So this same graphic was on Mr. Cole's presentation. This is a bit of a larger depiction. You can see the two orange blocks would be two or one section that would have three classrooms on each side to add up to the three, excuse me, the six new classrooms. In terms of the analysis, HMFH, when they responded with their study, estimated costs for the sixth classroom expansion at $2.4 million. As Mr. Cole mentioned, we wanted to make sure before we came to town meeting that we had some pretty significant confidence in what the pricing might be for such an expansion, so we hired Shawmet Design and Construction, who was working with us as the construction manager at risk on the Gibbs project, to provide a further cost estimate for the project. After their review, they came back with a construction cost of $2.6 million, but when you add in soft costs, the total estimated project cost is the $3.5 million that we're asking for your approval on tonight. Here's a quick breakdown of the budget. You can see hard construction costs of 1.9, Shawmet's construction soft costs, which include contingencies, both design and construction, at $700,000. We have design fees, fees for project management, commissioning and testing, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and technology. You see up there also a $50,000 line at the top for a cafeteria alternate, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So as part of the discussion at the School Enrollment Task Force, we were also made aware by the school department that with the growing population at the school, there would need to be a cafeteria expansion. Several options were reviewed by the task force, and there's been no decision made to date by the task force or by the school department of what option will be pursued, but we're carrying that $50,000 figure in the request that we're making to you tonight to be able to make some change or addition to the cafeteria space, and budgets or project budgets will be updated accordingly when we know more. Again, to reiterate what Mr. Cole said, we normally would come here and ask for just the design money, do the design, and then come back next year when we had bids in hand. We don't have the time to do that, to get this open by September of 2018. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and otherwise ask for your consideration and approval. Thank you.[909.16][909.16](APPLAUSE).
Anyone have any questions or wish to speak to the article? Sir, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Precinct 11. I'm Carl Wagner. Of course, we should respect, encourage, and thank the town officials for dealing with the burgeoning population, the binders and binders of children that I guess we have coming in through Mugar and whatever other way. But I guess I wasn't in town meeting longer than 10 or 11 years, so I'm not an old-timer to some of you anyway, but I'm also not so young that I don't remember what it was like when we had two middle schools, when we had a larger population and a larger population of students and children. I think what's happening, though, is we saw the importance of holding on to property in the town's assets, and we, in several years back, we were actually talking about selling certain buildings that could be schools. Thank goodness we didn't sell those. I specifically want to draw your attention to the changing sense that the town may have if we allow density continue. What we used to have is parents who had a lot of children. Now I'm afraid we have lots of parents, and we have to work very hard to both support this, but we should not let it go, that we are being forced to have more and more families, and it's a good success to have, that the town is so good, but the nature of the town is changing. We have to perhaps prevent the density from growing if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to the article? Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kate Leary, Precinct 4. I wanted to come up here and say a few words because I have two kids at the Hardy School, a kindergartner and a third grader. There also are a lot of parents of Hardy students at town meeting, but we talked, and you will probably only hear from me. I think that all the committee reports and Mr. Chapdelane have made it pretty clear that this project is necessary. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the changes I've seen in the school in the four years since my older son started there. He's in third grade now. His class was the last to have just three sections. Everyone else has four now. So my younger son's kindergarten, Charlie, he's in a cohort of four, and his class size is larger. It's just a few kids, but that really does make a difference in kindergarten. This year, the kids are eating on the stage of the cafeteria, which is fine. They think it's fun, but they've done everything they can to squeeze every inch of space out of that cafeteria, and I don't think they could fit one more chair in there at this point. Also, kindergartners are missing out on about half of their outdoor recess time nearly every day because it was determined that the main playground was overcrowded, and they had to split the recess time somehow to make it safer. Some of the classes were playing out in the front yard by Lake Street for a while, but it quickly sort of turned into a mud pit, and then the mud froze, so it wasn't really a good place for kids to play. So most of the time, the kids are getting 15 minutes of outdoor time and 15 minutes of indoor time, which the teacher has told me is very hard on the kids. I imagine it's very hard on the teachers, too. So making the Lake Street side of the building into a playable space is part of this project. I think it's an important part of this project. Teachers have also lost their lounge and planning space, so they're working in a much smaller space to do that kind of work. Instruction that would usually be happening in breakout rooms is sometimes needing to happen in hallways, and if we don't move forward with the addition, the art room would be the next thing to go. I want to say that the administration and the staff have been really flexible and creative in doing everything they can to use the space that they have, but I think it's fair to say that we've now reached the limits of that flexibility, and we're starting to see some differences in what's happening at Hardy versus what's happening at other schools. And I think the students and staff are beginning to feel the strain, so I hope you will keep that in mind. But my other reason for coming up here is to say thank you. I've gone to a lot of School Enrollment Task Force meetings, and I really appreciate how the task force has carefully considered the options, and I think they've really come to the right recommendation for the town. I also want to thank the Capital Planning Committee for figuring out a way to fit this into the capital budget. I know there are a lot of competing needs. I think if there's one thing I've learned at town meeting, it's that there are a lot of competing needs, and I'm sure it wasn't easy, but it was important. And finally, I do want to thank Town Meeting for your consistent support of schools. It's clear that this is a body that values education and takes its responsibility to its youngest residents seriously. I love that we're taking this vote on a night when the Madrigal Singers performed and the Boy Scouts came here to learn a little something about town government. This is why we're voting, to support education. It says a lot about the town, the support that you've given to education, and it's not something I take for granted. I encourage you all to continue Arlington's commitment to education by voting in favor of this addition. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak to the article?[1292.15][1292.15](APPLAUSE). If not, we're ready for a vote. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee on Special Town Meeting, Article III, $3.5 million for the Hardy School. Press 1 if you wish to spend that money, press 2 if you're against it. As soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, 1 in favor, 2 opposed. 215 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. It's a positive vote, and so declare it. And that ends Article.[1342.01][1342.01](APPLAUSE). Come on, I got to move on here. Article IV closes Article III and brings us to Article IV. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee for $24,450,000 for the Gibbs School. Is that right, Mr. Chapdelane? Go ahead.
Adam Chapdelane, Town Manager. Similar to the last article, I'll just briefly walk through what it is that we're asking for Town Meeting's action on tonight. So as you recall, last year, the School Enrollment Task Force, the school committee, this body, and then the voters of the town via a debt exclusion approved the renovation of the Gibbs School for use as a townwide sixth grade, again, aimed at addressing capacity issues at the Addison Middle School. So last year, when the debt exclusion campaign was underway, and based on the initial report that we received from HMFH Architects, we estimated that total project costs, hard costs, soft costs, and contingencies would be $25 million. Last spring, at a special town meeting within the annual town meeting, Town Meeting approved an initial borrowing of $2,550,000 to hire an OPM, an architect, and to start design on the project. Since that time, we hired a firm named NV5 as our OPM, Finegold Alexander as the architect, and as Mr. Cole described earlier, brought Shawmet Construction on as the construction manager at risk. Since the time that they all came on board, that project team has been working with the school department and with the permanent town building committee on design and cost estimation for the project, working with the school department. I know they've worked with school staff as well as parents in the district as they develop the programming and use of the building. Again, as Mr. Cole described, we really do have this tight timeline, such that we need to start construction immediately on July 1st to have the building ready to open by September of 2018. At this time, cost estimates for the project are at $27 million. The primary driver for the cost difference between the $25 million that was talked about last year and $27 million now are the addition of entire window replacements on the whole building and exterior upgrades. Those two items were excluded from the scope of the HMFH study. When that study was performed, they weren't deemed to be in immediate need of repair. As we've gone through the process, the design process, it became apparent to all that they were nearing end of life. By replacing them, we could achieve much higher energy efficiency, and it would be tremendously disruptive to renovate a school for $25 million and then come back in five to seven years from now and have to replace all of the windows and re-point the exterior. Also, important to mention that the permanent town building committee asked that the project team come back with a list of what we call value engineering items to see if there are ways to reduce cost of the project by other manners or other means, and after reviewing them in coordination with the superintendent, myself, the facilities director, the chair of the PTBC, and then ultimately the PTBC, we all agree that none of those pieces would be preferred or even appropriate for either the operational or academic or, excuse me, the operations or educational programming of the building. So how do we pay for this? We have a $25 million debt exclusion, and we're asking to fund a $27 million project. So we really take care of it in two ways, one way in which Mr. Foskett described in some detail. First, the Department of Revenue allows, on any debt exclusion in any town, the ability to have an inflationary increase from the time of when the debt exclusion was first passed and when construction actually starts, and they use a number of construction industry indices to figure out what that inflationary increase would be. Based on conversations we've had with the Department of Revenue, we feel that that could give us between $850,000 and $1 million in increased exempt capacity for this project. Additionally, again, as Mr. Foskett described, we, working with the Capital Planning Committee, were able to use some of the savings from the Stratton School project to fund the remaining gap within the capital project, which comes to that breakdown that Mr. Foskett described of a project that's 96% debt exclusion or exempt funded and 4% non-exempt. I think that's my last slide, so I'll say again, happy to answer any questions and ask for your consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wish to speak to the article? Sir?
I'm for this article because I support our children, but this body, the redevelopment board and the zoning board, has let this town down very badly in the last 25 years. When it was time to cut out buildings on postage stamps, nothing was done about it. Every time you turn around where there was one building, there's now two. Of course, the enrollment of the schools is going to increase. There's nothing you can do about it, as long as we don't smarten up in this body and start making the recommendations that need to be done. This is the most densely populated town in the state. We don't have much land left. We don't have much...
Mr. Burke? Can we talk about the school, not the zoning articles we discussed earlier? Back to the Gibbs. Gibbs School, we're talking about Gibbs. Yes, not the zoning articles we discussed earlier.
I understand that, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
But what I'm referring to is that we're going to be in this position again in not near future if we don't, all right, we're going to pass this article, I hope, because we want to support our children, but we've got to smarten up and start doing some things that really need to be done in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Anyone else wish to address the article? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee, $24,450,000 for the Gibbs School. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, you'll... Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, you'll go 1 for approval, 2 for not. 1 to approve the bonding and spending, 2 for not. 217 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative. It's a unanimous vote. And so declare it. That ends Article 4. That disposes of all the articles under the Special Town Meeting. Mr. Tosti, please. Mr. Tosti has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could just make one comment before I dissolve the town meeting. Last year, a Finance Committee report came out about two weeks earlier, or a week and a half earlier. It actually went out with the Selectments Report to you. This year, that was a bit delayed. You got it the first day of town meeting. The delay was caused by higher estimates on the Gibbs that's already been gone through and also that the state funded our bridge program two years ahead of what we had to do. This caused a huge disruption in the capital budget and in turn, the Finance Committee report. Many people, including myself, Alan Jones from the Finance Committee, Sandy Poole from the Town Manager's Office, and Brian Reer from the Capital Budget Committee scrambled to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. But the person that especially did the work was Charlie Foskett, and he worked for days to get it all together so we could get the report out on time. And I think he deserves a great round of applause from us. Fellow Town Meeting members, I move that the Special Town Meeting be dissolved.
All in favor of dissolving the Special Town Meeting 2017, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, the meeting is so dissolved.
Well, what I intend to do now is go right into the capital budget so we could finish the capital budget and get all of this done within one night. Therefore, I move that Articles 27 through 33 be laid upon the table so that Article 34, the capital budget, could be taken up.
All in favor of laying Articles 27 through 33 upon the table, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, they are upon the table. Article 34 is now before us, the regular Town Meeting, orange Finance Committee report.
It's all on page nine, and if anybody has any questions, I'm sure Mr. Foskett could answer them for you.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak to the capital budget, Mr. Knoblock?
Ray.
Ray, oh, you guys want to take a break? All right, we'll take a break, then we'll come right back. Let's do seven quick minutes. I'm just so excited to spend more money. Gotcha, Jordan. Okay, come on in, take your seats, that's it going. Please come in and take your seats. Mr. Jamison has the floor. Ms. Knoblock has passed. Please come in and take your seats. Oh, you want us to talk again? No, you passed. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I just wanted to make one comment, to echo the comments that were made earlier. Not only do we have a wonderful membership to the meeting, a wonderful amount of volunteers beyond us that chair all these committees, both the ones that present tonight and are active in our wonderful town, we also have behind us here an extraordinary set of administrators and staff. So let's give them an applause, too, please. I've been here 15 years now, and this is my fifth term. And as was mentioned earlier, things just seem to get stronger every year, and so we're very blessed by that. So I have a few quick questions on the capital plan. First, is just a housekeeping, is the intent to have these wonderful presentations put up online of the capital planning and the... Okay, the presentations? We had a wonderful series of presentations from permanent building, capital plan, the manager, those would all be great to be online.
Yeah, they'll all be sent to Mr. Poole, who will send them to the appropriate person.
On page 5 of the capital plan, I noted a new item in the long list that Mr. Foskett and I have discussed over the years, which he's going to be surprised this year. A new item on that called the bond premiums. Do we anticipate additional bond premiums on these many projects? I believe I heard that was going to be the case. And what do we anticipate the disposition, the capital plan or the general fund?
Mr. Foskett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlie Foskett, Precinct 8. So there are actually two line items for bond premiums here. And, well, in that particular table, it says 2016 and prior bond premiums. Prior to, I will say, this year or perhaps late last year, when the Municipal Modernization Act became effective, when we got a bond premium, we were able to, or we, in practice, would put the savings into the general fund and then roll it out as a notation here on the capital plan.
So you'd amortize it over several years?
Over four or five years, or seven years, whatever it might be. However, after the Municipal Modernization Act was passed, the law now says that the bond premium has to be applied against debt in the current year.
Okay.
So that'll be the practice in the future.
Okay, so that's good, to keep some of our debt down?
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially the same approach.
Okay, and we've had... Is that the same with the capital carryforwards?
The capital carry... No, the capital carryforwards are funds that are collected, not spent, because, for example, Chief Jefferson saves $100,000 on a fire truck. It's been borrowed, the money's in the bank, and that money can be used for other vehicles or like projects later on.
And lastly, you may not believe this, but I'm going to suggest that next year you add another item to this list. I note in the revolving fund that some of the money's there for the rescue. Revolving funds are put towards every year EMT employees that are now offsets in the budget. It occurred to me that the rescue, and that the rescue, which is listed here, is also from that fund at $50,000 a year that pays for the news rescues as they come through. It occurred to me that the rescues that we have sit in three brand-new or newly renovated fire stations for which we're paying debt service on. So I'm thinking that perhaps some aspect of the garage costs for the vehicles should be applied to the capital plan as a deduction from that fund.
We'll have to think about that.
I figured as much.
Thank you, Mr. Foskett.
What is the senior center? I'm confused by that. There's $2 million for two years to renovate the senior center or central school, which is it?
Well, it's the senior center.
Okay, is that part of the renovation for the art center?
No.
Oh, it's different than that?
Yes. There are a number of structural and infrastructure, I don't want to use the term deficiencies, but effects of aging of that building and its multiple uses. And the Town Planning Department and the Town Manager have made requests to improve that situation. We have funds this year for the planning of it, and the estimates are in future years. But we don't, the final numbers aren't in here.
And lastly, although I realize that this was a particularly tight year for you, and you spent an extorted amount of time to thread a needle, a very tight one, I am still distressed that there was only, over the next five years, including this year, there was only one Parks and Playground Field project listed, and that's for the Hardy Playground.
So that's a good point. And actually, that's because we have made recommendations for most of the parks and recreation improvements to be carried in the Community Preservation Act funds, which is, you know, because they're eligible for that funding. And one of the things that I didn't mention in the report, and I might as well sneak in now, is that the Capital Planning Committee strongly endorses the CPAC.
Again, like I mentioned...
Probably out of order. Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Again, like I mentioned last year, that's a disappointment because I was, you know, I think many of us voted for the CPA to have more of that versus just the same amount. But I understand the problems. And lastly, when I read this report, whether it's your crafting of it or someone else on your support group, the report was, to my mind, particularly well-written in showing the justifications for all the different work. So whoever actually put pen to paper, I thank them very much for a well-crafted report. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
That was probably Brian Reer.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Mr. Sharp?
TCHR, Precinct 7. I'm sorry for not having studied this and asked the question before the meeting, but I'm having a little trouble tallying the numbers. First section is acquisitions, and then in that next section, we have, roughly speaking, 11 million prior debt service, a million new debt service. Then we have a bunch of negative numbers that should subtract from that. But the subtotal then seems to be 13 million, so I'm just having a hard time understanding how the numbers work.
Can you say which table you're referring to? Oh, in the vote.
Yeah, 11 million, 1 million. Takes us to 12, and yet the subtotal is 13 after subtracting a bunch of negative numbers. Sorry, 10 on the Finance Committee.
In the orange report, page 9, 10, 11, 12.
Bottom of page 10.
In the...
In the Finance Committee report.
Yeah.
Which is what we're voting on, as I understand it.
Yes, that's correct.
No, just page 10.
Nope, up the front.
So you're referring to the 11,523,825. Is that the number you're questioning?
The number I'm questioning is the, what appears to me from the thick line to be a subtotal, 12,791,744, which does not appear to be the sum of the numbers above it.
Four up from the bottom, Charlie.
Yes, actually...
Well, I can tell you that if you take 11 and 1, 12, and then subtract a bunch of numbers from it, you don't get to 13.
Are you taking...
Can you help us?
You have to take the 3.9 million.
Thank you, that wasn't clear. That clarifies that the thick double score suggested to me that that was a completely different calculation. I just didn't see how it worked until just now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher? Anyone else wish to address Article 30? Oh, Mr. Ravilak.
Steve Ravilak, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, is it appropriate to just ask for some elaboration on a specific line item or two?
Sure.
So I'm looking at the Finance Committee report, page 11. So this is under Section 2 of the recommended vote for Article 34. One of the items is drainage rehab, regulatory compliance, Chapter 308. What is that?
Mr. Foskett?
Rataimaka here.
Yes, I do get excited about drainage.
Sure. Mike Rataimaka, Director of Public Works. That funding is to comply with the new Niptes Permit, a permit by the federal government for stormwater regulatory compliance. And they're proposing a much more strict permit, which will require much more testing and investigation of our system, and that funding is to offset those efforts.
So it's more strict in terms of, like, the capacity of the system, or...
No, it's more strict in testing the runoff, the effluent into rivers and streams, and as well as reporting on the amount of times we clean catch basins or sweep streets and maintain the stormwater system.
Okay, very good, thank you. And one other question. The second item in the same table, Chapter 90 roadway.
Mr. Rataimaka?
Chapter 90 roadway are funds we receive from the state for roadway maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to discuss Article 34? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. Question on some proposed expenditures for the Dallin School. The plan shows for this year, $10,000 for gym ventilation, and then next year proposing another $40,000 for gym ventilation plus $250,000 for a chiller, which is presumably air conditioning. Can somebody elaborate what is being thought to be done here?
Mr. Foskett?
So with respect to the chiller, the school department has had a temperature problem, let me put it that way, in that building since it's been remodeled. And it becomes especially important as they start to have more utility to the building for special programs, especially during the summertime. As far as the gym is concerned, they came to us with the problem that there were perceived ventilation and health problems in the gym, and they were not specified. I mean, in other words, they couldn't be specified, but there were complaints that had to be addressed. So the $10,000 initial spending is to characterize those, and the second-year spending is hopefully to cover the solution.
Good, thank you. I know that the staff over there eagerly awaits better ventilation in that building, so thank you for addressing it.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to discuss Article 34? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. Article 34 does require bonding, so it'll have to be a two-thirds vote. We're going to use our clickers. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. 1 in favor of Article 34 is recommended by the Finance Committee, 2 is against. 1 in favor, 2 against. Affirmative vote, 205, and the positive, 1 in the negative. It's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 34 and brings us to Article 30. Mr. Foskett. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Tosti. Whoever wants to move. Going to take 33 off the table? Going to take 33 off the table?
So Article 36 actually refers to the subject that was raised under the earlier article, which is bond premiums. And for those of you who are not familiar with this, bond premiums are a mechanism that is used in the sale of both commercial and municipal bonds that allow bond buyers to be more competitive, but at the same time have higher interest rates for the bondholders. So basically, when a bond is sold for the town, the town might have an interest rate of 3% when the, you know, perhaps the going prime rate is 1% as a result of whatever the Federal Reserve policies might be. So they have a higher interest rate because it's more attractive to the individual bondholder. And the difference in that sort of commercial rate and the higher rate is returned to the town in the form of premium, which is a cash payment. And in the last 10 years, when interest rates in general have been very close to zero, I don't know what you get in the local bank, but it's probably, you know, pretty close to zero. And in some cases, you hear people talk about negative interest rates. Those types of commercial rates are not attractive to people who would buy bonds. So they artificially increase the interest rate, and they give you the discount in cash at the time the bonds are sold. So as this became more prevalent, the state passed many improvements and many modernization steps in this recent Municipal Modernization Act, but it requires that the bonds, the premiums be treated and disposed of in the current year, and that we have to have an Article-in-Town meeting that does that. So that's the purpose. Can we ask your affirmative vote? Thank you.
Anyone have any questions about 36? Okay, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of Article 36 is recommended by the Finance Committee, please vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. Affirmative vote, unanimous vote, 199, the positive, 0 in the negatives. Vote, and I so declare it. Mr. Tosti.
As stated last week, we at this point want to bring up the budgets and start on the budgets and just, you know, run through them, and therefore, I move to take Article 33, which is the budgets from the table.
All in favor of taking Article 33 from the table, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, Article 33 is now before us. Mr. Tosti.
I think by now you've probably read my chairman's report. What I'd like to do now is just spend a couple of minutes. So if you could go to D1 in the Finance Committee report, which is the nice salmon color, it's all the way at the end. Just go to the end of it and go back one. Now, for those who've been in the town meeting for many years, we have had this every year. The revenue and expenditure, the long-range financial projection, is sort of the heart and soul of our financial plan. We use this to keep track of expenditures, to keep track of revenues, and try to keep us out of trouble as long as we can. So very briefly, you see the revenue part up on the top, that whole section. So we're projecting revenues. Some are very reasonably easy to do. Property tax can go up 2.5% plus new growth. State aid, the governor has kept his promises to increase a major element of state aid by as much as the state revenues grow. School building construction, oh, sorry. Chapter 70 has gone up, but not nearly enough to help us with the increase in our school enrollment. School construction aid is set, and that's going to disappear, as you can see, within a few years. So those are our best estimates of revenue. Down below, you have our budgets carried forth. The school budget, as you can see, and as we've said before, consists of three things: 3.5% increase in the general education, 7% increase in special education, and a floating number based, for new enrollment, based on 35% of the state-determined per pupil expenditure. So that's how we've done it. As you can see, the schools have grown about 6.5% of year. Town budgets are limited. Pensions have agreed to limit themselves to a 5.5% down the line. If anybody would like to have questions, I'll be happy to stay after the meeting's finished tonight, or give me a call, and I'll be happy to go through any elements. What I want to do, though, is a couple of major points. This does, you know, in past years, we've, it's been charged, we've been too conservative on a lot of the elements. So over the last five years, we've been a little less conservative on several of these categories: local receipts, state aid, and a few of the others. However, there's one huge element that we don't have built in here. It does not include the impact of an economic downturn. We haven't had an economic downturn since, like, 2007. So it's been, like, 10 years now since we've had a major recession. This does not include that. How would that affect the state aid right off the bat? We're always a prime target. Motor vehicle excise, our biggest local receipt, always takes a hit on that. And there'll probably be a few other elements also. So this does not take that into account, so keep that in mind of a danger. Next year, if you go to Item F, 1F, an override stabilization fund, next year, we've been putting money into it for seven years, since 2012. Now we're going to have to start taking money out this year. We thought we might have to take a small amount out this year. After everything was done, we were still able to put a small amount into it. But next year, 6,505, the year after that, 10 million, and the year after that, we drained the fund. In June of 2020 or before that, depending on how the board has selected and decided to handle it, we will need an override. And that's only three years away. Now, how big an override? Well, if we do a standard, we'll do an override now, and that'll be the only override for three years, then we're probably going to need an override of the second year, about $17 million. Now, $17 million, you divide that by the property tax from fiscal 2021, because that's one's going to have to be as a percentage, we get a 14% increase. 14% increase. That does not include the 2.5% that we normally get. So we'd have to approach the taxpayers and tell them, we need a 16, 16.5%, including a 14% override. Now, we've never asked for a bigger override than 10%. In '05 and '11, it's always been a 10% override. So that's going to be a hard thing, that's a danger. Finance Committee's committed, I hope you're committed, to bring down that number by controlling costs, not adding things into the budgets, and see if we can bring that down over the next three years. We need to maintain spending controls, we need to save every dime we can, we need to increase non-tax revenues, especially local aid. So the Finance Committee asks for your support in these budgets that are there, and we'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. To bring some order to the budget debate for the new folks, what we do, we start on page Appendix B, B1. Each one of these budgets are numbered. I'm going to go, huh? Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. We're going to start on page B1, Appendix B. Each budget is numbered. I'm going to go through each budget. If you want to talk about that budget, yell "hold." After we go through the whole bunch of them, we're going to go back to the beginning and discuss the ones that are held, anything under that budget at once, so we're not jumping all around. Then, at the end of our discussions, we'll vote all of the budgets at once. So we're going to start with Finance Committee. So if you want to hold it, say "hold." Hold. Board of Selectmen. Town Manager. Human Resources. Information Technology. Comp Controller. Treasurer Collector. Postage. Board of Assessors. Legal. Town Clerk. Board of Registros. Parking. Planning and Community Development. Redevelopment Board. Rental Properties. Zoning Board of Appeals. Public Works. Facilities. Police Services. Fire Services. Inspections. Education. Libraries. Health and Human Services. Retirement. Insurance. Hold. Reserve Fund. Water and Sewer. Recreation. Ed Byrne Serena. Council on Aging and Transportation. Youth Counseling Center. Hold. Okay, that's all of them. So we're going to go back to the beginning. Who wish to discuss the Finance Committee? Mr. Jameson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. I want to commend the Finance Committee on the hard work. Mr. Tosti mentioned the importance of long-range planning, and there's also another committee, there's Long Range Planning Committee and Budget Revenue Task Force. I discussed with the manager the potential, while those meetings are posted and freely available for people to attend, I at least have missed them over the last couple of years, and then maybe other people might want to be involved in the process, because that's where this process that we have here now starts next fall, is at the Long Range Planning Committee. And I discussed with Mr. Chapdeline whether we might be able to have the meetings for those where you subscribe to a notification. Is that, have you found where that would be possible?
Mr. Chapdeline.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager, yes, we can do that.
Great, I look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to discuss Finance Committee? Seeing none, that closes Finance Committee and brings us to Information Technology. Who wish to discuss that? Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. I noticed in the Information Technology budget that expenses are shown as going up substantially, almost 44%. And also, there's some, looks like a reorganization in personnel. Some positions are going away, some new ones are coming in. Maybe you could explain what's going on.
Mr. Good.
David Good, Chief Technology Officer. The expense line items that are going up are our software maintenance budget line item, which includes the maintenance fees for the newly acquired Munis collections package and upgrades to the Munis general accounting package. The second item is a $48,000 item, which is a messaging, unified messaging system, either Office 365 or a Google environment for municipalities. The positions, bear with me, Phil, for a sec. So the long story, things that keep me up at night. We're replacing our 30-year-old collection system. Along with that, we are upgrading infrastructure that supports that collection system. Cultural changes will occur in departments using new web-based software. We hope for efficiencies in both the way we do work and the way we service customers. Networking data security keeps me awake at night. As you can see by looking at any of the news wires, people get hacked, larger companies than us have it happen to them. We need to focus more on how we secure our networks, how we secure our devices, our servers. Wireless infrastructure has exploded. Bring-your-own-device has sent chills down my spine. I think that security is something I think we should focus more on. We're also going to replace two 25-year-old phone systems. They're staggering. We're going to go to voice-over IP, which will also integrate with the messaging system that we'll purchase. I will also integrate with a variety of other systems, including PA systems in the schools and a number of notification systems. We're also going to replace a 12-year-old, not-so-good email system. So I think that that will also bring efficiencies to us and to our staff, which hopefully will result in more efficiencies in the way we deliver service to citizens. Construction and renovation. One may or may not understand what that means to an IT department, but like most infrastructure, IT becomes a big part of the backbone of all of the systems that are in these buildings. So my job has sort of changed to being a Chief Technology Officer to a consultant to the number of construction projects. This year, there were three: police station, Stratton, and Thompson. And I'll call Thompson and Stratton two projects. Move people into, move people in and prepare them to live in modulas, and then move them back into a newly constructed site. It takes a lot of time. And the electronics that go into the building now with bell systems, alarm systems, video systems, wireless technology, media center-type projection activity, energy management systems, it's a new world. So some of the positions you see there, the Assistant Director position, is to allow me to focus on where we should spend our future IT resources and how we actually manage activities better, and focus on those four or five things I mentioned first.
Okay, thank you. Very informative. Keep up the good work and try and get some sleep, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Ms. Stamps.
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3. I'm wondering if Mr. Good or someone could give us an update on the town's website, which is what- is what the people in town are most familiar with. And it's great in certain respects, it's pretty clunky in other respects. I wonder if you have any upgrades that you're planning on.
Oh, Mr. Chapdeline's going to bring you up.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. So I think it's probably going into our second or third year of the new website, so we're due for a refresh with the vendor we work with, do both an aesthetic refresh and an update to the navigation, if we so choose to do. Beyond that, I would say I'd be happy to take any specific requests from you or any town meeting member or resident of things we can improve. It's, we try to get it better as much as we can. As I think you probably all know, it's a pretty enormous amount of information in a number of different areas, so we try to look at the actual statistics of where people click, how people click to access information, and see if we can get it as few clicks away as possible. But if there are advice or suggestions of how we can make it more user-friendly, we'd be happy to hear them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carmen. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I had to look like you.
Hi, I'm Ian Goodsell, Precinct 11. I was going to ask Mr. Good about the Munis Systems Analyst. Is that going to be an ongoing expense? Is that a consultant? Is that a full-time position?
Mr. Good?
Is that something we're going to see, you know, in years going?
I'm sorry.
Is that going to be some, is that going to be an expense we're going to see year over year in the future?
It's going to be a continuing expense. Currently, the Munis Systems Analyst is an adopted employee from the Health and Human Services Division, who has a forte in project management. And some of the projects that I've mentioned are also going to require that going forward, and we are going to keep that person busy managing those projects also.
And the Munis licensing, the Munis licensing fees that you mentioned, is that going to be an ongoing, a year-over-year expense as well?
Munis, like a lot of software vendors, gives you sort of the first year as your warranty sort of soiree, and then after that, they got you.
Yeah, understood.
It increases some 4% to 5% each year. And we'll be installing the water and sewer module along with the parking module, so there will be fees to come with that also.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
John Deist, Precinct 13. I guess I have some more questions about the security of, in particular, the financial part of the town and the information processing that's associated with that. I know you said it keeps you awake at night, but I wonder if you elaborate a little bit more on that.
Mr. Good.
Well, we have a onsite data center at the high school where some number of our systems reside. We also have a number of systems that reside in hosted service arenas in the cloud. That activity, both cloud-based and local-based, requires a variety of different types of security, whether it be firewall, virus protection, intrusion detection. All of those are in place now. The hacker business seems to be thriving, as we see. And to keep up with that is a pretty tough thing to do in a small shop like ours. So we will shortly, in the next few weeks to a month, do a security audit to see where a security expert thinks we have exposures, and then we will budget accordingly to close holes if they exist. You know, we've been, I won't say we've been lucky, I'd like to think it was skill, but I think a good amount of it is, people may not really be interested in our stuff. And also, we use industry-standard security measures currently. So I think you always run the risk of burying yourself in security, which impacts response time and service delivery. Or you run that fine line where you pick the best and what you need, and you have to do daycare on it. You have to watch it more closely, which is some of the time that I'd like to get back with some of these new positions, so we can watch it.
And we're going to be more closely integrated with the Treasurer's Office now, as I understand it. So maybe the question is either you or Mr. Carmen, but what about that area and the financial liability, if I can call it that, or danger associated with that office?
Well, as I said, hackers get better at what they do. The current collection system resides in our data center and has, we've borne up pretty well in securing that. The Munis system resides in the same environment, and I believe that we'll have the same success in securing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sirs.
I believe my question, oh, Annie LaCorte, Precinct 15. I believe my question is also from Mr. Good. Given these large investments we're making in software, in the backbone, so on and so forth, and given all the construction projects, do we have a plan, as we begin to move things around, to raise our data center and other critical systems to a higher floor than the one they're on right now? And do we have disaster insurance that covers the eventualities?
So I'll answer the first part of the question first. I think that we have been spending time now looking at hosted services based on the theory that we're eventually going to either renovate or knock the high school down, and I probably won't bear up that well living there during that kind of an activity. So I think that the, we've yet to put a plan in place as to how we will exit, but that exit has taken place. Because of the demand now on our school systems and some of our town systems where 7-by-24 access has become the norm, as opposed to the exception, we've been moving to sort of hosted services companies that do this professionally and give us the sort of redundancy that we may not have locally. We'll continue that practice as we move forward, but I think as time goes on and the plans for the high school firm up, we'll make some decisions about how we house our applications and our services.
So you're talking about moving our standalone software out of our buildings and into a data center housed elsewhere, as opposed to actually using software-as-a-service applications? I mean, I know we use some, but am I making sense?
Yeah, no, you're making sense. I think that the, some analysis has to be done with regards to cost-benefit analysis of hosting your own or hosting it off-site. We've not yet done that. We do it with each app that we actually entertain when we get requirements from customers, with the theory that hosting it away from the high school, based on the future of that building, is probably a more solid plan than keeping it in-house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to discuss information technologies? Thank you, Mr. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The next one to be held was Public Works. Who wants to discuss Public Works? Mr. Tremblay. Sand or trees?
I hear some chuckles, so I guess people know what I'm going to ask. Mr. Moderator, could you tell me how much salt we used last winter?
Mr. Tremblay, name and precinct? Did you say name and precinct?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ed Tremblay, Precinct 19.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Radamacher, Director of Public Works. Seven minutes to tell you how much salt we used.
Yeah, I just reset it.
This past winter, we used 9,700 ton of salt at a cost of about $760,000. We have been, I just would like to embellish a little bit. We have been making investments in equipment to be more frugal with our salt application. And as we buy new snow fighters, we get this equipment installed standard. So I've been tracking the past five years, the amount of snow, and in the year, in the winter of 2012 and '13, and the winter of 2013 and '14, were similar snowfall amounts. We had 72 inches of snow this past winter. And in those previously mentioned storms, we had 63 inches and 67 inches. And in those two winters, we used 10,684,000 tons, 10,684 tons. And in winter of '13, '14, we used 11,498 tons. So we're seeing a significant reduction in the amount of salt application based on this technology, which I'm happy to report.
Mr. Moderator, would it be appropriate to make a comment sort of generally to the town about snow and ice?
Yeah, I guess.
Last winter, we had a little bit of an icing event. And the town moderator, or the town manager, I'm sorry, felt the need to publicly apologize for the roads being a little icy. That struck me a little odd. I don't think the town manager needed to apologize for anything, because I would be willing to bet you a box of donuts that the vast majority of people who smashed their cars up in that event didn't have snow tires. I don't think anybody who doesn't have studded snow tires on their cars, they ought to be responsible and not venture out on icy roads. And it's not the town manager's fault if they do and smash their cars up. I mean, people don't wear patent leather smooth-soled shoes during snowstorms too often. And if they slip and fall when they're wearing bad footwear in a snowstorm, it's not the property owner's fault. No, I don't think it's the town's fault if somebody smashes their car up because their car is not appropriately equipped for driving in the winter.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay.
This is just a perception, but it was my feeling that the town, after the town manager had apologized, kind of bumped up the salt usage a little bit, maybe to compensate for that, I don't know. There was, we had a couple of snowstorms after that when there was more salt on the roads than there had been snow. And so the savings that we've been enjoying here could have been even more if people had been responsible. And then the other thing I'll point out is that we have money in various budgets here for studying water quality and studying Spy Pond and the Mystic Lakes and so on and so forth. I'd like to see a study done on the salinity of Spy Pond and the Mystic Lakes in the spring, because all the salt that the town uses, that's where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to discuss Public Works? Seeing none, next budget that was held.
Barbara Thornton, Precinct 16. I noticed that the value of the department for facilities is about 700, a little over 700,000, which is less than we spent on salt. That was good to know. We, I think for 700,000, the management and protection of our $300 million worth of assets is a good deal, but I actually think there's more. And I'd like to ask Ruth Bennett if she can answer a question for me, and the question is...
Well, you ask me, and I decide who answers it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'd like to ask the moderator what the possible value of the software, getting back into the earlier theme, that we have added in order to manage that, these assets. If she can, if the moderator can find someone who might be able to give us an estimate of the value of the software that we have to the town.
Ms. Bennett, can you answer that question for me?
Not the actual price, but the actual money saved or benefits gained.
Go ahead.
Ruthie Bennett, Director of Facilities. I think what you're asking is what's the value, what's the money that we've saved by putting in the energy management software system?
Saved or value gained.
So I can give a specific example. When we did an upgrade at the library, it wasn't just an energy management system, it was other energy efficiency upgrades. We saved $24,000 in the first year. At the peer school, we put in a software program known as fault detection and diagnostics, and we saved 12% on the utility budget for that year. Is that good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Steve Revalek, Precinct 1. A little while ago, we had a nice discussion about information security with respect to the IT department, and I'm glad to, you know, I feel, I'm glad to see that the Facilities Department is, you know, using technology to improve the efficiency of our buildings and that sort of thing. But, Mr. Moderator, I'm curious, what is the Facilities, Facility Department's approach to information security and software security?
Mr. Good, do all their systems live on your system? And do you protect their stuff as well? There you go. Go ahead. You can tell them.
Should I whisper it? David Good, Chief Technology Officer. Similar model. We host in the cloud some number of energy management systems, and we also host locally in our data center, and they're secured with the same security umbrella as our other systems are.
Okay. And you mentioned a, you were going to have a consultant come in to do a security assessment, and that will include Facilities?
Yeah. Network and servers and a variety of our other detection systems.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Facilities? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next held budget. Education. Who wanted to discuss?
John Maher, Precinct 14. One measure of excellence of our school system is obviously the MCAS results, which are always high. That is a reflection of the quality of the teaching positions, teachers that we have. But with my understanding, for many years, that we lag behind comparable communities on our teacher compensation. I'd like to ask the superintendent or someone from the school department whether or not that is still the case. And if it is the case, what is the loss to the town that we, when we lose particularly the young teachers who go to other communities that have higher compensation levels, especially when they have not begun to get into the STEPS, step framework, because they have not been part of the town for a while?
Can you answer that question for him, Dr. Bodie?
Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent. That's a great question. The last negotiations that we had, we had a goal of trying to have our master's column be comparable to the average of those town meeting, town manager 12 communities that we spoke about. And there was a lot of planning and thought that went into that. And we did achieve that in the last contract negotiations, very, very, very close. In the next two columns, we didn't, we're much closer to the average than we had been, but we're not quite there. So the answer is, we still are right at the average and probably below average in some of the columns, we're above average in the bachelors, but it is something that we're conscious of. I can say... I can say that our retention of teachers is actually quite, quite good. Generally speaking, when teachers leave, there's reasons where they're going, they're following a spouse or a partner, or they're moving too far away. Generally, when our exit interviews, we're not finding salary is the cause for people moving out to another school district. Now, that's not to say that we still have a ways to go in making sure that our teachers are fairly compensated. Because they're, they're just wonderful. We have wonderful teachers in this district. And I think long-term, that is a goal that we need to do, is to make sure that fiscally, we provide for salaries that are commensurate with all the communities that we compare ourselves to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jamison, you're next.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct twelve. I too commend the accomplishments of the school department over the many, past many years that I've been in town. Given the fact that I don't have children, it's, it's nice to watch people go through the system and end up going to, getting into colleges like the one I was privileged to go to up in Vermont. On page forty and following, I was pleased in the last couple of years that the school department has shown us some of the choices they have to make between having everything and not having everything, just like the town and the capital planning committee does. I find that useful in reading through the report. We skip to page sixty. That shows the, where the money comes from. And as Dr. Bodie mentioned, vast majority of it comes through Chapter seventy and town monies, property taxes. I have a question regarding the grants. And this applies essentially to, and the revolving funds. And this applies essentially to the town, the schools, and any revolving funds that operate within the town. My question is, when you apply for the grants, do you apply for the benefits that are, that are associated with personnel costs?
Dr. Bodie, are personnel costs built into those grants?
It's my theme this year.
The short answer is yes, we must do that. Most of the grants that we have are entitlement grants from the federal government. And that has to be built into the costs of personnel. So if we were to have someone be on salary and paid out of a grant, yes, we come for the benefits.
So does the healthcare costs and pension costs come out of the town? And is that gray billed in the town? Because I don't see it as an offset in the town.
It's, the, the monies for the benefits is paid from the grant.
Directly?
Yes.
So...
Well, the mechanism, I can't tell you exactly how that operates.
Okay, I'm just trying to help us, you know, because here are funds that are great because you raise 10% of the, on top of your base budget in grants. But if we are having to pay the costs in our benefit structure versus having those offset against the town portion of the benefits, then, then that's something that is of concern. And the same thing with revolving funds. If you have salaries, if possible, paying the benefits would be helpful. I know that's harder.
Well, the, the one revolving account that we do have is for our after-school programs. And the answer is yes. When we pay a teacher or an aide in our after-school programs, the money is budgeted for that, for benefits. Should the person be eligible for benefits? And it operates pretty much like an enterprise system.
Okay, and so for, I know the teachers are in the state teachers retirement system. But the pension for the other employees that are non-state teacher, that just comes out of the normal pension budget? Okay. And on the next page, or sixty-one, you have where all the money goes. And I have two, I just note that regular instruction is, is twenty-eight or twenty-seven and a half, if you include curriculum and instruction. And special ed is twenty-two thousand. So it's, it's a large portion of your, and ever-increasing, difficult to manage, I know. What is interventions?
Interventions are programs we put in place to support students who may or may not have an individual education plan. For, an example of that, several examples of that would be our reading program. That would be intervention. We have, at the middle school, we have math intervention in which students that meet certain criteria might be in an intervention class for mathematics. So these are supports that we put in place for students who may be struggling. And primarily, it's in math or language arts.
So those are like a lesser version of special, specialized or programs?
Well, they're, they're a program.
They're trying to prevent people from having to get into more costly programs?
Right.
Okay.
And to some extent, that, that would be the case. That we might, we might provide the services that would be needed that would have a student perform at a level where they might not need an educational plan.
Okay. Oh, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Mr. Berkowitz?
Bill Berkowitz, Precinct eight. I have a comment and then a question for the schools. I'm rising to raise a point that came up at a previous town meeting a while ago. But since I'm not sure it's been adequately addressed. So here's the thought. I think that we can significantly improve our schools by bringing untapped resources into the system. These particular resources are easily available and entirely free for the taking. They will benefit our kids and strengthen educational outcomes. What are these resources? They are ourselves. Each one of us here in this room, and virtually all Arlington residents, are in their way educational resources and community assets. All of us are community assets with talents and skills that we could share. So why can't we share our assets more extensively in the schools? By being guests in classes, certainly? By meeting with students and teachers? Or by having students come out to visit us on field trips or in other ways? Sitting here in this room alone, we have architects and attorneys. We have physicians and musicians. We have carpenters and plumbers and much more. Plus people of different cultural and ethnic backgrounds. Let's put our knowledge to use. Some questions for us. First, would you share, would you share your knowledge and skills with a class if you were asked to do so? I think you would. Second, would that be beneficial for students? Would that enrich a child's education if you did so? I think it would. But third, as anybody in the schools actually asked you to do this, please correct me, but I doubt it. It's true that our schools do have some visitors. You can see this in the school's report that is distributed. Excuse me, in that report. That's a good thing. And it's true as well that an entire school day can't just be based upon guests. But I'm convinced that there is a lot, a lot of room for improvement here and a lot of benefit yet to be gained. Some while ago, and I'm not sure it was before Dr. Bodie's time here, the schools had a paid volunteer, paid volunteer coordinator to stimulate and integrate these enrichment activities. To my best knowledge, that position and that function no longer exists. But if we were to invest as little as, say, $25,000 for a half-time person in that role, I think that would be a highly cost-effective move with a great ROI, return on investment. Even if the schools could not fund this, perhaps they could find a volunteer or perhaps similar function could be done through the local PTOs. The larger point, the larger point, is that for our children's education, we ought to utilize the resources we already have. And Arlington residents are great resources for students. We have expertise to share. We care about our kids. We are available and we are free. Why not take full advantage of us? If there was ever such a thing as low-hanging fruit, we are it. And let's think of the benefits. Because when you've got greater student involvement, our residents learn more about the schools and become more connected to and supportive of them. Our children learn more about the community and feel more connected with it. And that means upon graduation, our kids are then more likely to give back to the community. It's a triple win. So my two questions for the schools are these. First, would it be worthwhile for the schools to expand this type of resident involvement in a structured and coordinated way? And second, if so, would the schools consider taking concrete action along these lines, such as by bringing on a school volunteer coordinator? Or by taking other concrete steps to strengthen and improve these community connections? What I'm talking about here is not going to show up on test scores. But it will show up in the quality of a student's character, I believe, and in our general community quality of life. We have a great opportunity here. We all have gifts. Let's make sure more of those gifts are delivered to the schools for everybody's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You both have rhetorical questions. You want Dr. Bodie to answer them?
Those last questions I asked is, what is, what is your reaction, Dr. Bodie, to the prospect of having...
I'm going to allow a little questioning along this, but it's not really financial. This sort of borders on school committee personnel. So I'll let her give a brief answer. Because frankly, it's not really having to do with the budget. But a brief answer, Dr. Bodie. And I suggest we bring this up with the school committee directly, Mr. Berkowitz. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for your comments. We are always looking for people to support our students. And in fact, this gives me perhaps an opportunity to make a plug for our internship program. We are looking for internship sites for our seniors so that they have an opportunity to learn outside the school from people with lots of variety of expertise. We do, we don't have a district-wide volunteer coordinator as there had been before. That was a volunteer position. Different schools have programs like that. For example, Dallin has a bridge program that reaches, that bridges between different parts of the community and the school. But I can tell you that speakers are invited all the time. So we'll, we'll take your suggestion and we'll take a look and see if how we could possibly even expand and improve what we're already doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. Thank you, doctor. Frank Ciano?
Frank Ciano, Precinct fifteen. I refer you to page sixty-nine. And my question is, as I look at the proposed budget for administration salaries and wages from fiscal year 2015, it was three million seven plus. And for fiscal year 18, it's up basically a million dollars. I contrast that to custodial salaries and wages, which in fiscal 15 was a million three. And basically, it's the same for fiscal 18. And then I compare that to clerical salaries and wages. In fiscal 15 was a million six, and it's only up 300,000. So why is administration salaries and wages up a million as contrasted to custodial and clerical?
Dr. Bodie?
With respect to administration salaries and wages, part of, I mentioned before, the negotiations that we had a couple of years ago. We're in year two of contract negotiations. So there had been some adjustments that had been made to administrator salaries. In fact, in some respects, administrator salaries lag much more behind the average of the town manager twelve communities. So there had been adjustments. I might have to look through all of the different detail to give you, you know, a more specific answer than that. But, but what I can say is this, is that we really have not increased our administration. What, number of administrators. In fact, we have a couple of unfilled positions that we are looking to fill this year. What might be here, and I, I should tell you that we have not had a CFO in our, in the school department for most of the school year. In fact, I have here tonight with me Tony Murts, who has been working one day a week with us to fulfill that, fulfill that role. So we would have to go in and take a look, you know, pull out all of the line items to be able to give a more detailed answer than this.
In, if I may, in administration, who would be included in that? Superintendent, principals, whom?
All of our, all of our curriculum leaders. Anybody who is an administrator within that. But I think that there are other people who are non-union who are also in that. I'd have to see the detailed list of all of the people in that to tell you which... But one thing that I can say again is that this is not due to an increase in the number of administrators. Your second question was...
Well, if you compare that...
Oh, custodians.
Yes, the custodians and the clerical staff. The increases are like negligible for clerical and custodial as contrasted to administration salaries and wages. Just, it hit me in the face as I looked at it.
We have had, with some changes of people leaving, we have provided some contractual services that, that has happened since the 2015. So have the custodial salaries had a COLA and increases during these years? Yes, they absolutely have. And, and as have, we call Unit C, which are clerical, they also have had an increase during that time period. We probably have a few, a couple less clerical than we did back then, than we now compared to then.
Okay, I'm happy with the schools, obviously. And it's my position that the schools and the performance of the schools directly relates to the value of our real estate, aside from everything else. So it's really important we have good schools. But please keep in mind, administration, custodial and clerical, I just feel bad for the smaller people, if you will.
I can tell you, I can, I will add one last comment. I can tell you, in doing the salary analysis, the people who are in the clerical union actually are well-paid relatively speaking to the communities we're comparing ourselves to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, thank you. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct nine, and a member of the Arlington School Committee. Under Massachusetts law, we can go through this budget here and tinker with all sorts of little individual line items. We could add a half, a parking clerk, we could... We have tremendous power on all these other line items. However, the law states that the jurisdiction over the schools rests with the school committee. And the town meeting's jurisdiction over this is just that bottom-line number. Shall we appropriate $60,928,485? The school committee starts work on the budget basically in September. We have a budget subcommittee. I was a member of that last year. We have extensive meetings. We have extensive reporting on budget expenditures with a monthly budget report once a month. We hold an annual hearing after the superintendent's recommended budget is presented to us. We have considerable deliberations on all the line items going through this process. And at the end of March, we voted the budget that we are presenting to you tonight. I find it difficult to be asking questions about small line items on a $60 million budget within this context when you don't know what the question is. But we are more than happy to entertain any and all folks who want to come down and talk to us, either in a school committee meeting, subcommittee meeting... to us, either in a school committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, or through email. We welcome your participation. We welcome your questions. But we also want to be able to answer them intelligently with the ability to go look through the details that may be necessary for the question. I would note that we have had zero public participation on budget items through the entire budget season, and we had zero commentary in our public budget hearing. If you want to have a say on what's going on in the school budget, if you want to ask a question, if you want to bring it before us, we have public participation. You can talk in our subcommittee meetings. We have public hearings. Please come visit us. Thank you.
We can still ask questions about it. We can't change it. We can ask questions.
But if the questions can be better answered with a reconsideration...
True, agreed, but we, we can still ask questions. Any motions for reconsideration? Mr. Tosti has given three considerations on 34 and 36. We have a motion to adjourn. We're going to take up the budgets from where we left off. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
No, see you Monday.